We still have two minutes, so you can keep talking if you want.
(laughter)
One minute now.
I realize we're together. I just put that on.
They have several of them standing there.
Yeah, all those dudes, yeah.
Staggered times.
I know the phone, I was hoping. Saturday morning, I was doing big borrow, please, my kids.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Education, I welcome you to the May regular meeting, our final meeting of the school year, final regular meeting of the school year this year. And it is great to see so many students here, and we look forward to recognizing you a little bit later. We realize that some of you may be here just for a particular item or items on the agenda, and we understand if you need to leave the room, and if you don't wish to stay for the entire meeting, but we welcome you to stay for as much or as little of the meeting as your schedule permits. We will now rise for a moment of silence and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Please be seated. The first business in order is the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have questions about or changes to the agenda? My motion is in order on its adoption.
Make motion.
Motion by Ms. Fadkin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. The minutes of the April 17, 2012 regular meeting, all members were present.
Make motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fadkin. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries five to zero. Thank you. The next business in order is student staff recognition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank all of you for coming out tonight as we recognize our students and some of our staff members. As we always say, this is our most favorite part of our meetings. First, we want to recognize some of our students, and many of them are here with us tonight with their parents and their family members. The first student recognition, the Agency for Substance Abuse Policy, known as ASAP Youth Network, was created when ASAP Board was awarded the Enforcing Underage Drinking Laws grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention through the Kentucky State Police. The Youth Network has 12 members who have been diligent in their efforts to educate youth, parents, and retailers on the dangers of underage drinking. They have also worked in conjunction with local agencies to bring about effective change to substance abuse policies. Some of their activities and achievements include: they awarded Best Semitography for their Keep It Real video contest submission title, "If I Could Only Go Back." Alcohol retailer sticker shocks, created and member-hosted television show also called "What's Up Winchester?" That will air on local access and website of the same name. They educated many in the community on the danger of alcopops. In recognition of their hard work, these Clark County students were awarded the 2012 Mothers Against Drunk Driving Kentucky Youth in Action Team of the Year Award on April 26 in Frankfurt. Members of the Clark County ASAP Youth Network were presented with the award at the Mad Youth Day at the Capitol. Those team members from the Clark County Public School District were Kayla Harrison, is she here tonight? Kayla. Reagan Clark. Michaela Jones. Emily Houston. Anna Omahundro. Jacob Omahundro. Matthew Omahundro. Nick Bailey. Haley Ty. Shanda Scobie. And Julie Williams. Willen. Let's give all of these students. (applause) Also, their coordinators are with us tonight, Kristin Stevenson, Program Assistant, and Jana Smith, the Clark County's ASAP Coordinator. Are they here?
Jana.
Thank you, and thank you for the parents, for, I know you had a lot of support to continue with these activities, and thank you also very much for bringing our awareness to this topic. Thank you.[266.22][266.22](applause) Our next award, we call here in Clark County Public Schools the YES Award, which stands for Your Excellent Shows. The Consular General of France in Chicago and the Cultural Services of the Embassy of France in the United States are very pleased to announce that George Rogers Clark Jr., Sam Crankshaw, is among 25 laureates chosen nationwide for the Green Connection 2012 Contest. Sam has been invited to participate, listen to this, in an all-expense-paid educational and scientific field trip from July 2nd to July 13 in Paris and Saint-Germain in Vincors, France.[319.33][319.33](applause) Sam is currently enrolled in AP French. He earned this trip by creating a French narrated video on the importance of forest conservation that can be accessed at our website, http://...we'll send that to you.[331.12][331.12](laughter) Join me in congratulating Sam Crankshaw on receiving this awesome recognition and opportunity.[339.12][339.12](applause) We will place that link on our website, so you can view the video. Thank you, Sam, and congratulations. All right. Our next student award, as I told Dorothy and her mom, we're gonna get them a reserved seat, they were here last night. Dorothy is a 10th grader at George Rogers Clark High School, and has been selected to attend the Gatton Academy of Mathematics and Science in Kentucky. The goals of the Gatton Academy are to enable Kentucky's exceptional young scientists and mathematicians to learn in an environment that offers advanced educational opportunities, preparing them for leadership roles in Kentucky. The Gatton Academy assists in preparing Kentucky to compete in a knowledge-based economy by increasing the number of scientists and engineers who live and work in our state. Students will finish their junior and senior year of high school living in Snyder Hall and taking courses offered by Western Kentucky University. At the end of their two-year course of study, they will graduate from high school and have earned at least 60 college credit hours. The Gatton Academy has selected 50 students for its class of 2014. The students in this year's class span 37 counties from across the Commonwealth. This gifted group of high school sophomores bring with them an ACT, an average ACT score over 10 points higher than the statewide average for graduating seniors. The selected students scored an average composite on the ACT of 30, on the ACT of 29 in the math portion. The highest possible score is 36. The 2010 state average ACT score for graduating Kentucky high school seniors was a composite of only 19.6. Join me in congratulating Dorothy on her selection to the Gatton Academy.[483.02][483.02](applause) Dorothy was also honored as one of our Governor's Scholars last month. The Governor's Scholars Program is a five-week residential summer learning program for outstanding Kentucky students completing their junior year in high school. Established in 1983, this program provides academic and personal growth in a challenging non-traditional environment that balances a strong liberal arts program with a full co-curricular residential life experience. To be eligible for the nomination and selection, a student must be an 11th grader at the time of selection, intend to return to a Kentucky school district for the next school term, be a resident of Kentucky, have taken the ACT, the PST, PSAT, or the ASAT in the 9th, 10th, or 11th grade. Students must be nominated by their school district to be considered for admission. They attend and free of charge. The 2012 program will be held on the Bellamy Campus in Louisville, the Central College Campus in Denville, and the Mary State Campus in Mary. The following students from George Rogers Clark High School were accepted to this year's Governor's Scholars Program. Justin Karas. Is he here tonight? Dalton Gallenstein. All right. (applause) Joanna Grant. Cora Kerber. Katherine McCrery. Gina Petrie.[571.16][571.16](applause) Olivia Shear. And Haley Ty.[574.16][574.16](applause) As you can see, we have several of our students out here tonight, but they're involved in so many things, it's kinda hard to get them all here tonight. But again, let's congratulate these Governor's Scholars.[588.16][588.16](applause) Okay, we still got more. ACT recognition, this is the first year that we've done this, and we talked about it with our staff here, and we wanted to congratulate not only our, we have one senior that had a perfect score, a junior that had a perfect score, but we also wanted to recognize our students who had a 30 or higher composite on the ACT, that juniors that took it in March 2012. So this year's students that scored a 30 or higher on the ACT with a perfect score of 36. Eden Bennett. Is Eden here tonight? Samuel Crankshaw. Sam. Is he gone? Did he leave? Ooh. Anthony Haggard. Gaines Humphrey.[632.12][632.12](applause) Cora Kerber. And Gina Petrie. Okay.[636.12][636.12](applause) Many of these students are involved in so many things, it was kinda hard to get everybody here tonight. We did talk with them, we knew they weren't gonna be here, so some of them will be here next month, we will do this again. We want to personally have the opportunity to publicly thank them and to recognize them. We have one student at George Rogers Clark High School this year who made a perfect score on the ACT of 36. He's not with us tonight, but his name is Justin Karas.[671.00][671.00](applause) And we talked with him, and he'll be here with us next month as well. Let's give these students and their parents, we know they can't do this without their team effort, mom, grandma, aunt, uncle, extended family, we want you to stand as well as we recognize you for supporting your students. So we do stand.[715.12][715.12](applause) Thank you also very much. We've got some of the best and brightest right here in Clark County, and as they say at EKU, you can get there from here.[732.12][732.12](laughter) At this time, we want to recognize some of our staff members. We started this recognition program.[739.12][739.12](laughter) We started this recognition program last year, we wanted to recognize our staffs, and we have four categories this year. They will get a plaque, and the board is also gonna be recognizing them with a $500 gift certificate. So this year's winners, they're nominated by their colleagues, their principals, their team members who teach at them, and so we're really honored tonight. We've got many more applications this year than we did the first year. I keep saying to our principals and our educators, you know, sometimes it's really hard for us to say way to go to each other as educators, so we've gotta learn how to recognize and say way to go, fellow educator, more often than we do. So we're excited, we've got many more applications this year. The 21st Century Learning Award is the teacher who have shown excellent use of technology in student learning. We have a winner from each category, elementary, middle, and high school. So this year's winners from elementary, Tiffany Banks.[801.12][801.12](applause) Miss Banks is a junior.[803.12][803.12](applause) Jennifer Williams, technology teacher at Concrie.[805.12][805.12](applause) And Mrs. Janet Delphi is an 11th grade English teacher at George Rogers Clark High School.[813.12][813.12](applause) Our second award is the Difference Maker Award, teachers who have shown great prowess in ensuring that students from all backgrounds and races are academically successful in school. Our elementary, well, Koi Hall from the welding instructor from the Clark County Area Technology Center.[829.12][829.12](applause) The Monica Parton is the library media specialist at Concrie.[831.12][831.12](applause) And Tammy Woodward is a 2nd grade teacher at Central Elementary.[833.12][833.12](applause) Above and Beyond Award, the teacher who goes beyond the call of duty to help their students and/or their school. Our high school teacher, Ms. Megador, math teacher at George Rogers Clark High School.[853.12][853.12](applause) Ronnie Brock, 7th grade math teacher at Clark Middle.[855.12][855.12](applause) And Michelle Hamlin, physical education teacher at Shear.[857.12][857.12](applause) And our next award is the Relationship Builder Award, the teacher who has worked to build positive home-to-school relationships with students and their parents. Our GRC winner is Mr. Michael Chamberlain, the Collaboration and Resource.[881.12][881.12](applause) Cassandra Curtis, 6th grade math teacher at Concrie.[883.12][883.12](applause) Those math teachers. That's a good thing. And Marty Frazier, Special Education Teacher at Strode Station Elementary.[887.12][887.12](applause) All right, let's give all these staff members and their friends and colleagues.[889.12][889.12](applause) I think somebody's gonna get a picture. Jeff, got it? Jeff's gonna get a picture out here for you. Congratulations.[894.12][894.12](laughter) Congratulations. I've got one other introduction I wanna make. Oh, my finger gone. But that's okay, she'll get used to this, sometimes people walk out. But I want to take this opportunity to introduce Shear's new principal tonight. She is here with us, and I want to introduce Ms. Regina Dawson. And.[912.12][912.12](applause)
Thank you, thank you, I'm so glad to be here tonight. I thank the board for having me here. I thank also Shear's SBDM Committee and Dr. Ferris for trusting me with their school, my visits. I've only had a couple of visits this year, and what I've noticed the most is the sense of pride that they have, and I'm so glad to be a part of that tradition of pride this year. I'm originally from Lexington, but I'm looking forward to becoming a part of Winchester and the Clark County Public Schools, so, thank you.
Welcome. The next time on the agenda is the public comment period. Mr. Edson Kelfry has signed up to address the issue of safety on school bus monitors.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I used to drive a school bus, and there's definitely problems on school buses, safety problems. A lot of things goes on that nobody ever knows about, you never hear about. Other bus drivers would say a whole lot more, but they're afraid of losing their job. You can't rock the boat if you need a job. Well, I gave mine up, so I'm gonna rock the boat. When you've got 50 kids on the bus, and they stand up on their seats and walk around and stick their heads out the window, you know, what can you do about it? You can ride them up. I got a letter here, a man, a bus driver put in my truck after I talked to him. He said, "Bourbon County, Fayette County, and Richmond have 100% monitors. They realize the problem with children and make some adjustments for safety." Then he says, "It's strange when a teacher puts a child on a bus and says, 'Watch out for this one, he's been an issue today.'" The next bus to babysit and watch him. How can you do that and be safe? You can't do it. As of today, I've written up nine kids, and I've only had one response. And I'm, you know, Ms. Ferris says, "Keep on writing, and they will do something about it." And that's good, you know, ride them up and then do what you can. He said he told a kid Friday to stay in his seat for the third time, warned him of a possible write-up, and he said, "Huh, it's just a piece of paper, and I'll have no trouble with my teacher." He said, "I was driving a bus in the country, as soon as he told me this, too dear forced me to stop quickly." I've taken kids back to school at least once or twice a week because of standing up on the bus and whatever. And people pull out in front of you, they don't pay attention to buses, people don't care, a bus is just another vehicle. If a kid's standing up here on this seat, you have to stop real quick, he's gonna hit the windshield, or he's gonna get down in the bin, in the stepway. And I resigned because, you know, I don't want one of them getting hurt or killed on my route. So I hope the board will look into it. Other schools can do it 100%, and I don't see why Clark County can't. But it takes someone to get killed or hurt before maybe they try to change the situation that should be done before. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person signed up for public comments is John Graves to speak about board relationships and committees.
In March, my husband and I came, and we voiced concerns at a board meeting. We discussed issues of bullying, threatening behaviors, and oddly enough, our superintendent opted to deny the threats by threatening us, and in stating that I had no documentation. Well, anyone that has been on Facebook knows I have documentation. Now, we don't need to do this. We do not need to do this. Your community needs you. All of you. This can end so simply if you will make a commitment to talk to the community. Judy, you said it in January, you wanted the community to be here. I came, but you all sit here and you don't answer. I realize some things you should not answer due to legality, but you're hiding behind a law that doesn't say you cannot answer us, it says you don't have to. You're making the choice. When you don't answer, you leave us to draw our own conclusions. I am begging you for the sake of these kids. Stop. Elaine, there is a YouTube video of you in which you say, while interviewing for the Fayette County job, that you wanted to have more public interaction in Clark County. You even stated you wanted to go out to the community. Do it. It is an excellent, excellent idea. I know you all think that I do not like you, you think that I am out to get you, but that could not be further from the truth. I just don't know how to reach you, and kids are being hurt. If you care about these kids and this community, try and open forum with the public. Just try letting them come here and say things that are on their mind. They don't come because they say, "You get up there, and you stand, and nobody says anything." Show us how committed you are. There are problems. I do not expect you to agree with every single thing that I say. I don't expect you to do every single thing I want you to do. What I expect you to do is put the kids before anything else. I hate what is happening. It is stressful, it's hard on teachers. I'm sure they all can tell you, this is a very bad situation. You have the power. All you have to do is interact with your community. I cannot for the life of me understand why you won't. If you will reach out to them, they will support you, because that's what they want to do. I've heard from parents, teachers, administrators, that everybody wants the same thing. It's gonna be up to you, but I need to know this evening if you are willing, any of you, to make a commitment to find out what the community and the parents want. Dr. Cudic, are you willing?
I have a dialogue ongoing with the community.
Okay. Debbie?
I'm not speaking to you, John.
Okay, Judy?
This isn't the appropriate forum on which to address your issue.
Elaine? BJ? Deanna? Mr. Rosenthal?
I have a problem.[1427.12][1427.12](laughter)
You're making a terrible mistake. It's a bad mistake, it doesn't need to happen, and the kids will pay for it, and it's just too bad.
The next time of business is the superintendent's report. Beginning with the attendance update, Ms. Disney.
Yes. Does everyone have either a hard copy or you got those loaded? Good. As you know, our attendance month for the ninth month ended last Friday, and so then we had to make sure things were balanced and that sort of thing, so, but as you can see, we are improving. Can you get it? I'll share the good news with everyone. Our ninth month attendance for the dis- opted to deny the threats by threatening us and in stating that I had no documentation. Well, anyone that has been on Facebook knows I have documentation. Now, we don't need to do this. We do not need to do this. Your community needs you, all of you. This can end so simply if you will make a commitment to talk to the community. Judy, you said at the January meeting, you wanted the community to be here. I came, but you all sit here and you don't answer. I realize some things you should not answer due to legality. But you're hiding behind a law that doesn't say you cannot answer us. It says you don't have to. You're making the choice. When you don't answer, you leave us to draw our own conclusions. I am begging you for the sake of these kids. Stop. Elaine, there is a YouTube video of you in which you say, while interviewing for the Fayette County job, that you wanted to have more public interaction in Clark County. You even stated you wanted to go out to the community. Do it. It is an excellent, excellent idea. I know you all think that I do not like you. You think that I am out to get you, but that could not be further from the truth. I just don't know how to reach you, and kids are being hurt. If you care about these kids and this community, try and open forum with the public. Just try letting them come here and say things that are on their mind. They don't come because they say, "You get up there, and you stand, and nobody says anything." Show us how committed you are. There are problems. I do not expect you to agree with every single thing that I say. I don't expect you to do every single thing I want you to do. What I expect you to do is put the kids before anything else. I hate what is happening. It is stressful. It's hard on teachers. I'm sure they all can tell you, this is a very bad situation. You have the power. All you have to do is interact with your community. I cannot for the life of me understand why you won't. If you will reach out to them, they will support you because that's what they want to do. I've heard from parents, teachers, administrators, that everybody wants the same thing. It's going to be up to you, but I need to know this evening if you are willing, any of you, to make a commitment to find out what the community and the parents want. Dr. Cudic, are you willing?
I have a dialogue ongoing with the community.
Okay. Debbie?
I'm not speaking to you, John.
Okay. Judy?
This isn't the appropriate forum on which to address your issue.
Elaine? BJ? Deanna? Mr. Rosenthal?
I have a problem.
You're making a terrible mistake. It's a bad mistake. It doesn't need to happen, and the kids will pay for it, and it's just too bad.
The next time of business is the superintendent's report. Beginning with the attendance update, Ms. Disney.
Does everyone have either a hard copy or you've got those loaded? Good. As you know, our attendance month for the ninth month ended last Friday, and so then we had to make sure things were balanced and that sort of thing. But as you can see, we are improving. Can you get it? Want to share the good news with everyone. Our ninth month attendance for the district is 95.27.
Magic, magic, magic.
And our attendance folks, our entire staff is working so hard with this. They're so diligent. Trapp is flying the flag proudly for the ninth month. I actually took the flag down from McClure today and took it to Trapp. Kathy was okay with that, though. They were very excited to get that. So, that tells you where we are. It kind of gives you an idea of how we've gone this month, and of course, the 10th month has these five days. And these five days are looking very good, I would say.
And how was Mr. Rose with the movement of the flag?
Well, Mr. Rose is, we're working with him.
He's been about first or second all year.
Yeah, he keeps it very good track. And then the 10th, when we come back next month, we'll give you the recap of everything and some things there. I do want to call your attention, it's not on there, but from, as you see, from August 8th to May the 11th, we're at 94.67 for the district. At this time last year, at the end of the ninth month, we were 94.02. So, we made some substantial gains, and this does not reflect our lowest five days, which we get to take out. So, we're hoping. If we can go to the next one, Mr. Carey. That kind of gives you a comparison ninth month from last year to this year, and it's a bar graph, kind of a visual there. I do want to say just a couple of things. We also do kind of a year-to-date, and we'll recap this again next year, but at this point, year-to-date, Providence has a 96.64, Pilot View a 96.49, and McClure 96.29. So, that's there, but we'll, as I said, next month, you'll get the total recap. But I must mention these two things. The most improved for the ninth month from last year is GRC. And the most improved year-to-date is Fannie Bush. We're real excited, and as I said, next month, we'll have some really good news for you.
Excellent. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Christie is going to give us a Transportation Department update. Is Mr. Pelfrey still here?
I sent to you just a, about a three-page document. I'll not go through all of that, read it to you. Do you have any questions about anything up there or anything else about transportation? And one of the interesting things, if you look, air mileage, our routes remain about the same. We did show an increase this year in field trip mileage.
keep, we keep up to that drivable standard. So, we'll probably reduce. I'll be coming back to you, 3rd plus 4th buses for sale over here in the next couple of months. There was some conversation about the monitors. I put a section in there on monitors. At the presently, the only time that we use monitors, they're on a bus where there are students with an IET that's determined by ARC Committee or preschool. All preschool buses are required to have monitors. At this time, of our 48 routes, 20 of those buses have monitors on them. You see the cost if we were to add the additional monitors, what it would cost.
What kind of training do we give our bus drivers?
They go through, it takes about at least six weeks in driver training. Once we put them on there, they become an unassigned driver, and they ride with other drivers. We don't just put them on to a route. They ride with other drivers for a period of time to learn the routes, how to handle things. Then, when we do put them on a route, someone, the transport, our supervisor, transportation supervisor, or our driver trainer will ride with them on the routes for a certain period of time until they're confident that everything, that they're good on everything. That generally, you know, once they're gone, it's at least a month, month and a half before anybody's on a bus, any new driver's on a bus by themselves.
And then, how often do they have to have, be retrained or recertified?
They go through recertifications every year on things. Our training that we do, we do an annual training every year, and every, one of the parts that we always put in is discipline. Driving a bus is a difficult thing. It's difficult in a classroom. As a classroom teacher, you know, the discipline in a classroom can be tough sometimes, but if you can imagine in a bus, you're not limited to 24 or 28 in the classroom. You've got 50, 60, and you're doing your instruction and your training. You're doing, through a 6-inch tall, about 3-foot wide meter. So, it is a difficult job. Every year in our training, we do a piece on working with students, discipline and how to handle those things, and training on that. And our discipline process, principals do a good job. If we have a problem with discipline on the buses, I can call any principal and work with them closely to resolve that. We ride the buses. I'll ride the bus occasionally if we're having issues. Right here, we're having issues, if we're having issues, I'll ride the bus. Danny Fisher will ride the bus. Our driver trainer may ride the bus. Principals have ridden the bus. So, we try to support the drivers as much as we possibly can on those things.
One comment. I mean, I would like to see our principals running the schools and not having to ride the buses. And I do think we do have some issues in terms of issues on the buses. So, I'd like to see some consideration perhaps be given to hiring some floating bus monitors that can move from route to route to route and not necessarily be in the same place at the same time, go someplace where trouble is needed, kind of pop up here or there. If kids are making trouble on the buses, and they don't know whether there's going to be a bus monitor on that bus today, it may give them a little bit more of an incentive to behave properly. But I am aware in my office of some issues that have happened on buses, and I think that's where some of the bullying can take place. So, our principals and our schools are doing a good job of that, but we can't watch all kids at all times.
Right. And if drivers suspect anything like that, and they let us, and we, buses are videos, there's four cameras on each of the buses. We try to pull videos, try to address. Certainly, there is, it can happen, and not get to the bus driver, and it's not made obvious to the driver, the driver doesn't see it.
And the principals first, that's not the first line of discipline, is that the principal gets on the bus.
No, oh, no.
There is a process, a discipline. It's in the handbook. It's also in our policies, what the referral routes, the referral processes are. Also, I mean, there is no guarantee that, because you have a monitor on the bus, that the kids are going to behave, because we've heard from monitors on the bus as well. So, you know, that's something I think the board would have to look at, and if you have the funding to take care of that issue, and you'll hear your budget on, next week, on the 24th, to see if, whether that is where you want to spend your additional, if you have any money, if you want to spend it there. But, because there's not a lot of, that is a recurring cost. So, I think you would have to really look at what that would cost you if you were to add additional monitors to your buses. Some of it, I think, is that, as I always say, is that when those kids come from home, we have to do a better job with the instruction that they get when they get on the bus and what the expectations are. Many of our bus drivers don't have any problems whatsoever. I think that's like anything else. It depends on who the driver is, just like it depends on who the teacher is in the classroom, like it depends on who the principal is in the building, as to what the expectations are and whether or not the kids are going to listen to what is needs to be said. So, I think you've got to look at all of that before you make the decision that you want to add additional monitors to the bus. And if that's something this board wants us to look at after we look at the budget, then you, you know, you can let me know that. But it will be an expense, and you'll have to decide if that's a problem.
Well, I understand that. I did not suggest that lightly. So, and I don't think we have the ability to hire a monitor for every bus. I do not think the district has that sort of financing.
Yeah, we put that in the $400-plus thousand. But I think some of it goes back to, as we said, it's, the drivers probably just need more training. I mean, we just have some drivers that can't handle the bus, and we just need to do a better job with selecting who our bus drivers are. Some of them have, we've had to let go. I mean, there have been some issues on the bus that have been unsafe, and we've come in and we say, "We can't allow this person to ride the bus anymore." And we don't take that lightly whatsoever, the safety of our kids. But I do think sometimes we've got to look at the individuals we put on the bus as the driver.
Who does our training, Mr. Christie?
Michelle Sands. She's the driver trainer. I've been here five or six years, and she was here before I came. Excellent. Excellent. They've even asked her to do some training in some other counties for some drivers.
So, it's not a company or consultant that we use to do?
No, no. We have a person that's been through the school and is trained, is trained, that does her drivers. She works as a dispatcher when she's not doing training.
One other question, Paul. We probably don't have the data. You'll probably have to bring it back. But I know with the plans to consolidate the elementary schools, there's going to be some more mileage put on our buses. Do you have any idea what those numbers are and what the fuel costs associated with that will be?
If you, the only thing that would add additional miles would be if we added additional routes, and that would be because of a timing issue to make sure that students were on the bus at a minimal amount of time. You've got to remember, all the buses, every day, they're parked out back. So, every day, they drive from here to the furthest points in the counties, drop off the kids at schools, and they come back here. So, they're still going to drive from here to the furthest parts of the county and come back wherever the schools are located. They're still coming back here. So, it's not an increase in mileage. Now, the only thing, like I said, that might increase your transportation cost would be if you looked at adding an additional route or to speed things up to get out there instead of having one bus that travels all the way out to the end of the county and back. Maybe they don't start picking up students till they get out to the end. They only pick up halfway back, and they did, and they'll back and save time to put students on the bus less than amount of time. So, an additional route would increase the possibilities that students would have less riding time, and that would increase your mileage. But that would be the only thing this is really doing to the mileage would be if you added an additional route.
So, these would be express routes or?
Yeah, yeah. You just, instead of picking up all the way out or all the way back, you would put two buses, and one will pick up halfway, and the other will go out halfway and start picking up, and then they make a quicker trip back. It's less ride time for students. It puts them on there at a minimal time. We strive for four to five minutes most, that's what we strive for. That's our goal.
Other questions or comments related to the transportation report? Good information, Mr. Christie. Thank you for the update. Next, we have our state and district updates. Dr. Ferris?
Just a few updates on the assessments. We had approximately 1,609 in, of course, required tests taken in Algebra II, Biology, U.S. History, and English II.
It's on silent. It's silent. It was just, it's on silent.
Uh, dude, you're nice to have a break.
It's on silent. Did you do your speech? I didn't do the speech tonight.
Do you want to do the speech? Go ahead, do it now.
To quit, we appreciate your, um, silent for all, and I promise it was on...
It's on vibrate.
Vibrate, alright. I'm so sorry.
It's okay, Judy.
I'm so sorry.
We needed that.
We need one of those.
We needed that.
See, it's on...
I believe you. I believe you.
Okay, moving along. We had approximately 7, 1,750 in, of course, non-required tests taken in English I, Algebra I, Geometry, English III, Chemistry, and Physics. We cannot tell you how many tests and how the assessment was going to Georgia Ochs Clark High School. It is just unbelievable, the testing that goes on in high schools across the state right now, and it's just the nature of the beast. But we are to commend GRC and their staff and Central Office that helped these individuals. I mean, they, you're talking about getting it down to a science. They did an awesome job logistically, making these things happen within the appropriate time and the ethics and everything. And of course, you know, Pat is probably the best district assessment coordinator in 20 counties. She is so a stickler about everything, and I'm telling you, it's a lot of testing that goes on at the high school. Matter of fact, they're testing this week. They're doing finals this week. So, we are to, it's just a lot of testing going on, so you can just hear what we just said. And not to have the computers that we need to do online testing. It was a logistical nightmare, but they made it work. And as we are looking at the new high school, we had some conversation today. Our goal is to have enough equipment, technology in the new high school where we can go to all online testing, because that's exactly where it's going to go. So, we're looking at that and excited about those opportunities. We will be revisiting the new standards that we've implemented. We'll be looking at those, our curriculum guides and our pacing guides on May 22nd and May 24th. Teachers have agreed to come back on those days to revise and revisit those documents. We've got springboard testing, springboard training, I got testing on the mind, training. As you all know, I think we shared with you that our two middle schools are going with the springboard curriculum. That training will take place on May 22nd through the 25th. We've got literacy design training going on with our middle schools and Science and Social Studies. We've got advanced Kentucky, laying the foundation training going on with about 40 of our teachers in English, Science, and Math this summer. So, they don't really get the summer off. We've got grade-level meetings that are going to be on the 21st as we're continuing to look at our elementary curriculum maps and mastery checks. We have approximately 65 students at this time, I think those numbers are up, probably close to 80, that's going to be attending our Summer Learning Academy. We're having all those particular students at Stowe, and these will be our rising first graders, and we will be doing some extended learning in literacy and math for those particular students who are not quite there yet. We also have a Summer Learning Academy at Clark Middle with 80-plus students, and they will be focusing on reading and math. It's one of the areas that our middle school teachers had told, and principals have said that when they come to them, they're not quite ready. So, we're taking our rising sixth graders and working with them. We taught, our biggest discussion was when do we have the Summer Learning Academy, because we get 11 weeks off this summer. We wanted to make sure teachers had enough time to go on vacation, and so do kids. But attendance was an issue last year, so we're going to have it the week of June 4th through the 29th. And that'll be at Stowe and at Clark Middle, and Central will be having their own. Yes, you know, they had the School Improvement Grant, and our migrant program will be collaborating with Central's summer school. So, we're going to have probably close to about 500 kids in school from June 4th through June 29th. And so, we're excited about that opportunity to give those kids an opportunity to get on grade level before they start back in August. We also, one of the big initiatives that we've been talking with the high school and with the Special Education Department is we are equipping our new, the old high school with a college and career readiness lab, and they will be working with the Technology Department, and the lab will specifically provide educational and skill development for some of our lower-performing students that are in the gap. As we have identified those students who have the double-digit gaps, they will be working in this college and career ready lab. working in this college and career ready lab. We'll expand the electives that will be offered to these particular students, what we call in a new Education 2020 program. Students will access this within the, within the Triumph or ACT prep and, and the plan assessment preparations. So we're looking forward to that. We've done our kindergarten registration. Our preschool students that rolled up to kindergarten was about 198. New students registered 118. So we're looking at, right now, about 316 kindergartners. We always get more as we get closer to the school year, but so far, that's our preregistration around kindergarten. Of course, we've got our food service program, our food services, summer feeding program going on. It's several different sites around the community. We're excited about that. Our maintenance department, of course, is planning for our scheduling our summer projects. Paul will be bringing that to you in June, the summer projects that we have on, on the docket to take care of. Just a couple of state issues that I wanted to bring you up to date on. This is a cost that we're going to have to put in our budget that has never been in the, and we have never had to pay for. But for nearly 20 years, the Administrative Office of the Courts has provided free criminal records reports for personnel and volunteers. That's no longer the case. We're now going to have to pay $10 for each one of these criminal records checks. You go figure, that's going to be a big expense to our school district, because we have many volunteers and we have to do it with our staff. And we keep trying to increase the number of volunteers, and so that's something we're going to have to put in our budget to pay for. I don't know any other way to do it, and we've got to have them done. That's new, as I said. They used to be free. Now it's going to be $10 for schools, and it will take effect July the 1st. And, and it's discounted from $20 fee for other customers. So we do get a $10 discount.
So I guess it's good that, that we've, Corin, Betty, put in place the program that when we sign up a volunteer at one school, they've kind of, it becomes a district-wide thing, so we're not kind of double.
They don't have to do two or three, right? Absolutely. Yeah, but it's still going to be a significant cost for us, which we've got to put it in the budget.
How much, how many volunteers do you have?
Oh, how many volunteers, ballpark?
I'm sorry, she just dropped it on me. Tell me this.
125 just at Hannah McClure.
We have a runner, it's your partner.
And, yeah. And there, and so Hannah McClure had their own volunteers, and so Strode Station will have their own, and Central. So you're talking, if we say we averaged 150 at 10 schools.
Oh, yeah.
You know, multiply that by $10.
And I have to do those to interstate students, so I'm going to raise my tuition.
Anybody who comes in and works with our students has to have their criminal records check. So anyway, just wanted to share that with you.
So do we have to do that for student teachers as well?
Student teachers get the school background check and high school board standardings, the student observers. We can do it in free, opposite courts.
Right. They don't have to pay.
Okay.
The other thing I just wanted to bring to your attention, all the legislative bills that have passed. One that we're going to be looking very closely at, that we haven't had a time, had a chance to really discuss yet, but I'm very interested in, is House Bill 37, which authorizes districts of innovation. We're going to be talking about what would that look like for us, what are some ideals around this. It's a big push across the state to do some things that are out-of-the-box thinking, things that we've never done before, some non-traditional things, that's going to have an immediate impact on teaching and learning for our students. So we're going to have many discussions around that, and hopefully we will be able to come back to you in a couple of months and say, "Here's what we're looking at." This bill, of course, was in lieu of charter school bill. So we want to look at if this would be advantageous for any of our schools, our district, to kind of accelerate some of the low-performing students in our district, our low-performing schools in our district. But just wanted to bring your attention to that, and I will send that bill to you when I get a chance, so you can kind of start looking at it as well.
Is it 37, Chris?
House Bill 37. That's all I have any questions for me?
That's all I got. Thank you.
When you figure out what's in House Bill 37, please let the rest of the state know, because I don't think anybody else knows either.
I know. They just try to do something so they wouldn't get charter schools.
When, when are the end-of-course assessment results coming back to the district?
It's great. It should be back by May, right?
Okay.
I hope it, that's what they think, so.
Okay, so by the end of, by the end of school, so that those are figured into the course grades or whatever? Okay.
That's the written part, too?
Not the written part.
Okay, just the.
Awful choice. Okay, thanks. And next, we have the overview of our spring map results. So this is always an exciting time. So Ms. Taylor for Fannie Bush.
Good evening. You have a long agenda, so you have the data in front of you. Do you have any questions?
Okay. I'm not loading here. Sorry. You have to be excited about your fourth grade reading.
Oh, thank, same thing.
I am very excited about fourth, and if you-
Other questions or comments to?
I think they did in kindergarten.
They did.
Yeah, that was nice.
Awesome, awesome little kindergartners, love them. Any other?
Well, I do, I'll make one more comment. I do have to say that when we look at our kindergarten, I think teachers are now much more diligent about looking at students individually and saying, what can I do to make sure that this student is on grade level? And I think we're going to see that over the course of the years, that they're going to really focus on, on the student, not these students.
Other questions or comments? Any other pearls of wisdom from you, Ms. Tyler?
No. I'm still, you know, this innovation thing that has just came out, I'm really thinking hard on that.
Ah, yeah.
Have you all seen, they all sent it to you?
My wheels will be spinning.
Anything else related to Fannie Bush, questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Howard, Hannah McClure.
I presume we should just use the same approach in that you can look at the data for Hannah McClure and if you have questions.
Network connection lost. Would you like?
In aligning the new core content. Now, we will have to wait and see from there whether or not we answered in depth enough to, but we do.
I think you showed some good growth from spring 2011 to spring 2012 across all grades, we appreciate that.
Thank you. Are you all doing any different intervention strategies?
Well, yes, intensely. We were happy with EduJobs this year. So we, I had three retired teachers that came in for 126 days. And then, of course, we hired the 45-day teacher, so those kinds of things. But our PLC approach to going back to why isn't this child doing it? What can we do now? That's a reoccurring question every time we met. And the teachers come back with explaining what we can do, or making brainstorming, and we come up with new ideas, or flexible grouping with children in different ways. We have the same approaches as far as the curriculum we've bought. However, we did add a few things, the Coach books and another connected book that we use with the children. But we select, and we also took our instructional resource teachers, and they met in common with the regular teachers to make sure they were aligning what was being taught. So they were reinforcing what was being taught in the classroom in the intervention groups.
Anything else regarding Hannah McClure's data? Anything else to share, Ms. Howard?
We had a good year. We're all exhausted, but we're proud of what we've done so far and hopefully we'll see the fruits of our works soon.
Thank you. Mr. Jenkins.
As the two performers said, PilotView's data is on the screen.
You have great numbers. Third grade had a better testing day in winter than they did in spring.
Third grade's an interesting grade. I saw a little bit of that more this year.
Sorry, not third grade, I apologize, second grade.
Second, yeah.
I'm counting instead of reading the line.
If you notice that, I have quite a few of my grades did that. It was better.
Any explanation?
Then how do you?
Well, a few things I was kind of thinking about knowing I was coming tonight. You know, it is a different test this year. Not only is K-Prep different, but MAP changed as well. They, thank goodness, got on board with the standards change. So we did take a different test. I believe, Lewis, you can correct me, you know, last year I think we used their proficiency numbers instead of grade level. Is that correct? Did we use it?
We've been using the same RIT scores on these, or?
And they did renorm them as well for that matter, which was, I think, a good thing. It's nice to know they got renorming in data. A thing that doesn't show up in these numbers, but I think is really, PilotView is the growth, is the pilot for the new growth model for teachers for evaluation. And so my teachers who have been going to that training have been looking a lot more at their growth this year. And even though these numbers are important, because it's raw, exactly what we have to have in order to leave third and fifth grade, looking at the growth of some of the students from fall to now, even though they're not showing up here, is phenomenal. Because then you can really see that, you know, no, they didn't make grade level. But look at the growth they made. And so that's the kind of conversations we've had just because we've been a part of that training. And, you know, like, for example, if I picked a grade, like, third grade, 18% of those kids in third grade were at their growth that didn't show up on here, if that makes sense. So, you know, I believe as this starts rolling out, next year it's still another pilot year, and then the year after that, they're hoping to have everybody doing it, and then 14, 15. But I think you're going to see more where they're going to be looking at kids and where they start and where they end, and then be able to talk about, look at the success that they had, even though they're not at grade level, which is what we want them to be, but the growth that they showed. So, you know, that's what I went through and looked at. The kids who didn't show up on this report, what kind of growth did they make? And so, like I said, almost 18% of them were at, like, in the third grade, they were at a 2.5 level. They're not in third grade ending, but they're in the, at the end, the middle of third grade. I said that wrong, 3.5 level. Because we're looking for end of third grade. And so, you know, that's one of those other data pieces we'll start looking at in a few years.
Other questions? So moving to TRAP.
One thing on TRAP that I was happy was is that all of them did come up in all areas in a sense from fall to spring. I don't, I didn't, I mean, we look at winter a lot when winter shows up, but mostly now the time, we're looking at fall to see where they did begin and where they ended. So I was... Our grade even at both schools, even though it was a little higher over at PilotView, I think we had the same conversation because we felt like our students, I think they need to be where they're showing as far as reading, but they're not showing it on their map. So we started talking about the interventions we had in place. Do we need to look at extra gear? Do we need to look at what kind of intervention they do first week of school instead of waiting until the third or fourth week? So we definitely do have a plan for those first graders. And I think, of course, any first grade teacher would say, having that plan at the get-go is the way to hit those kids. And so we did, definitely had a, okay, what did we do that we need to change kind of conversation.
I noticed a trend, not only both your schools, but Providence, Fannie Bush, and McClure, that the testing for kindergarten in both reading and math was almost, it was that eye-opening gains. Anything?
Well, I like the fact that we didn't start in the fall, like last year we did, and the year before that, I don't think we did. I kind of forget. But they used to not even take the tests that we're giving them now. They used to take a different test. I'm glad we've switched to this because it gives us that early, okay, where are we at? I think the winner, you're getting them used to a computer. I mean, I'm not saying, I mean, of course, they play with a computer, but, you know, it's quite a test. I would encourage every one of you all to somehow get to the schools in the fall and see that somebody taking the MAP test. Because even as a teacher, you see, and you're like, wow. I mean, it's a pretty creative kind of thinking out, you know, they really, somebody who put it together was a... There's a lot of manipulation of the screen, especially in the math. You're pulling things from one place and you're putting them in a box, or you're putting them in a basket. It's, I like it. I mean, it's really good stuff. And so after those kids see that once, I think, you know, for kindergarten especially, they're not used to that. I mean, they're used to playing computer games, but, you know, it's a little different. It really is. And I like the idea behind the questions they ask. You know, and teachers even change their style a little bit after they see what they ask. So I did notice that, too. I was thinking about the kindergarten. In the past, kindergarten was kind of scary. And I was like, oh, my gosh, wow. But as far as what they were given. But I think we all were pleased. I noticed Fannie Bush was the same way, where the kindergarten did very well in the spring. Again, just getting them used to. It also reads for kindergarten in first grade and second grade. They get to put on headphones, and it tells them, you know, so it takes away that kind of inhibition because if they had to read at that age, of course, our scores, most of them are, well, I can't say most, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of them are still just learning, making sure their letters are learned, and letter recognition, and their sounds. We like the fact they're reading by the end of kindergarten, which could happen, does. But most of them are still, so it's reading to them, telling them what to do. Good old kindergarten. Everybody tells me in the second grade, a few years ago, what they do in second grade is now kindergarten. I'm like, oh, no, do two grades instead of one. It's not your grandma's kindergarten. Grandma didn't go to kindergarten.
It's grandma, dude. Other questions or comments related to TRAP's data? Thank you very much. Mr. Rose.
Never mind, your grandmother didn't go to kindergarten. They didn't have kindergarten when I was in school, so. And that's not been that long. We had Dolly Domino's, Ruth Plammetts.
Mr. Rose, you're dating me there.
Yes. All right, same procedure. There's the data, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Angie, you set a precedent.
It's all right, we'll get a next time.
Overall, I think we did very well. The only thing that shocks me is the third grade.
Yeah.
And that third grade group is, as Steve said, a different bunch this year. Plus, one of my third grade teachers has been out since early March with some surgery. So they, we have a good substitute, but it's been kind of a different, different group, especially in math. And we are quickly solving our math problems in Providence. We are adopting the everyday math program, and we've got a consultant coming in this summer to help us. So we look for great gains next year in math. We're pretty good on attendance.
Did he mention that we're pretty good on attendance?
Actually, it's been a battle all year between you and Steve. I'm actually glad Kathy wants to break YouTube up for a little bit.
Yes, yes. At the color, starting when they were in third grade, those fifth graders have gone from 49% to 75%, which is...
Yeah.
So we hope it reflects as well on the K-Prep test.
How much of a predictor? Now, the MAP was a pretty good predictor for the KCCT, wasn't it? Is there any correlation on expectation for MAP to the K-Prep? Do we have any?
Well, I think they did go through the MAP and realign some of the standards, so it should be. But it's just, you know, it's, yeah, it's a predictor.
Other questions or comments about Providence? Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for sharing the MAP data. That kind of gives us some clues to let us know. And I like the presentation of it, where we can go back. Now, how did these kids do before? Well, it's right there, so, thank you all. Next, Student Support Services. Consider approval for Central Elementary School to charge $15 for Beta Club membership. Ms. Smith.
Good evening. I'm just here to ask permission from the board to charge the $15 fee for the Beta Club. This fee goes to the National Office, and it's a community-oriented club that a lot of our students are participating in. So just, I'm going to be sure it's okay to charge that.
Is this new for elementary? How long has Beta been in elementary?
Central's been doing it for a few years, so it isn't new for us. I'm not sure if the other elementary schools are doing Beta.
So how have they been paying the $15 in the past?
The students, I think they've been charging it all along. We're just now coming and asking permission.
One of these forgiveness versus permission things.
Just for the record, I didn't start it.
She read the policy.
I'm in the middle of reading those policies. We're going to have those down by next year. No, we just, this is, we're just really bringing it to be on Above Board.
Okay, perfect. And if you have a student that can't...
We have scholarships for those students. No one is turned down.
How many students do you have?
We had our induction ceremony this morning. I think there were probably about 20, 25 students. They do six hours of community service through this program, and the school does four hours of community service. It's designed to teach children to have empathy for those who are less fortunate. Pretty high standards for getting into the club. They have to maintain a 3.0 grade point average. They'd be willing to give up their personal time to do the community service. And this fee covers fifth through eighth grade as far as membership.
Other questions or comments? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve Central School to charge $15 for Beta Club membership.
My motion is in order.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swub.
Second.
Second by Ms. Facken. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the Beta Club membership fee of $15 for Central, say aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Ryan.
I'm here to ask the board to consider approval to employ teachers with emergency certification. This is just primarily for substitute teachers, something you have to do every year.
Is this one we normally do it?
Mm-hmm.
Getting old.
Yeah, when I was doing mine, where I keep track of what's going on during the meeting.
This year, that process is going to online. It's the same process, but we can't start until we get the number.
So this is a routine matter, right?
I'm just taking a reply to, don't feel too bad.
Yeah. So your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve employment of teachers with emergency certification for 2012, 2013 school year.
Motion is in order.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Dr. Kudak.
Second.
Second by the school. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the emergency certification for employment of teachers for 2012, 2013, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, and continuing the workers' comp.
Consider approval of renewal of the contract with Kimmy for workers' compensation insurance coverage for 2012 and 13.
Save us some money.
Save some money.
Yes.
And Mr. Mitchum is here from Kimmy, if there are questions for, just in case she has.
Why the nice reduction in premium?
I think it's been to the proactive approach we worked with Ms. Ryan and Paul. Kimmy came in this year, even though your mod went up, which is a factor, it goes into work comp. Premium went up from 1.03 to 1.11, which would have meant an increase in your premium. We received some additional credits from the charity.
For years, it was still about $80,000 less than what you were paying in insurance for your workers' comp. By 2018, it was still...
Wow.
We keep losses down, we keep bringing...
Absolutely.
Yes.
That's our job.
Right, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Other questions related to workers' comp coverage? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the renewal of contract with Kimmy for workers' compensation insurance coverage for 2012, 2013 school year.
I make the motion in the amount of $204,462.53.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Facken, second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the renewal of the contract with Kimmy for the 2012, 2013 workers' comp coverage in the amount of $204,462.53, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And next, the assurances for our grants. Ms. Rosenthal.
Well, this is the same time of year as last year.
Yes.
I only, it was item six last year.
That's right. We, this is the time of year where we assure the federal government and state government that we will comply with their requirements so that we can receive our federal and state money, such as Title I, Title II, professional...
State and federal grant assurances, Ms. President. My motion is in order.
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Moore.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the assurances for state and federal grants, Ms. President, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Now, it's Clark's turn.
Just let me put this in context before she starts. What you're going to be looking at, what you have reviewed is a person service contract with Regina Dawson. As we had said earlier, the sheer site-based council started this process early in April. And it was by design that they wanted to start early so that they could bring a principal on early in the process before school was out, so that they would have time to interact with the parents, interact with the staff, and have some transition time with the interim principal before she went off of her contract. As you all well know, when we had the principal, when we selected the principal a couple of years ago, the individual didn't get to start until sometimes in August. And it really caused an issue for us to kind of get that culture going and have that person to get embedded and immersed into the culture. So that's why the council wanted to have the selection process done early enough so that the principal, the new principal could come on board to have some time to meet the staff, meet the parents, and have some conversation with the interim principal as they are planning for the new school year. And as you all know, we had to send out any letters that we had to send out for non-renewals was on May the 15th. So the school is now in the process of looking at hiring for next year. They're looking at programming, they're looking at scheduling. And we wanted to make sure that the new administration would have an opportunity to have some input, hear the discussion around that. So that's why we're asking that this individual will be able to come on at this time. By law, she can't come on as the principal because we already have a principal in place. Actually, the principal who's in place on an MOA will be in place until June the 30th. I know this sounds complicated. So while she's on the MOA, we also have an interim principal in place. So while she's on the MOA, we also have an interim principal in place. So by law, we can't have two principals in this position, so that's why we're asking that she would come on in a personal service contract under the title that you see on the contract. So I thought I would do a better job explaining that than Stacy, but although Stacy will explain anything that you want to know about the contract.
I have no issue with the contract. It's a ten-day contract with a thirty-day written notice for termination.
Yes.
You know, that's part of being a...
Apologies, we did use a standard contract we have, and I did not notice that.
Thank you, Dr. Kudak. That's two things we've talked today.
Okay. I'm, uh, your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve personal service contract with Regina Dawson from June eighteenth through June thirtieth in the amount of two-thousand-nine-hundred-thirty-six dollars and ninety cents.
Motion's in...
With the revision to the working agreement.
With, okay.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Facken.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the personal service contract, as presented, with the revision as noted, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And now the salary schedules.
This is presenting you with the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen salary schedules for certified, classified, and substitute staff. And we did change the format of one...
The KRS does state that we have to inform our certified teachers, our certified, um, employees of their best estimate of their salary forty-five days before the first of tendance day, or June fifteenth, whichever comes first. That's why it's always on this board agenda, and we will also, um, email this out to all of our teachers if it's approved tonight. We'll email it out tomorrow night, and also, we all always put a salary schedule in the welcome letter, but in order to be within the KRS, we will be emailing this out to all of the, our employees on tomorrow if, after it's approved.
Questions about any of the salary schedules? I was thinking that last year, we had some changes in, about this time of the year, some, some titles, some, uh, position title changes. Are those incorporated here? Any, any positions that we did...
I would think there were some new positions added this time last year, and those were incorporated into the salary schedules.
Okay, I couldn't remember what they were, and I was looking for them, but I thought if I can't remember what it is...
Yes, there were some classified positions and some other things.
And those have already been done, okay.
Those are all incorporated into these schedules.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Your recommendation, Ms. Ferris? Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the, um, salary schedules for two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen.
I make the motion. Motion by Ms. Facken.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moore. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen salary schedules, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing, the payroll calendar.
Yes, there is a statute that requires the board approve the pay schedule each year, so we have a schedule for our twelve-month year-round employees and a schedule for our ten-month employees.
Any substance of changes from last year?
No. I mean, other than obviously the dates, but, no. Twenty-four pays twice a month.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing...
With the extra service schedules. Um, I have the district, the elementary, and the middle school, the high school will actually be coming to you next month to ask that we give them a little more time on that one. And there are no significant changes on this. We did adjust the K-Tip to what is actually being reimbursed by the state, and...
Is that up or down?
It is down. They have decreased that, um, over the last couple of years, and based on what they are estimating for next year, and I called to see if there were any further changes, and that's what they still anticipate. Uh, there were no changes to the elementary, continuing with the five-hundred dollars per academic coach that you approved later in the fall, and the only change on the middle school was to add a couple of...
Second by Mr. Swab. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen district elementary and middle school extra service salary schedule, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Now the athletic salary schedules.
Yes, of the middle and the high school athletic salary schedules. Your presentation, there were no changes to the middle school other than the addition of one school-paid position. Both middle schools agreed on the amount.
Which is, maybe added for a stipend of three-hundred dollars each. Is that in every sport, including the dance and bowling?
That is. Those are the school-paid.
Okay.
If the school feels that they need an additional coach, they can have up to two extra per sport.
Okay. And they pay out their... Whatever that can come up with, okay. Questions? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend we approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen middle and high school athletic salary schedules.
Motion is in order.
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. School.
Second.
Second by Ms. Facken. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen middle and high school athletic salary schedules, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. And continuing...
And I apologize, I discovered a change on this this afternoon after I had submitted it for the board approval. A decision was made to change on the classified extended contract schedule, the subfunder print clerk position.
And after we had some discussion, Barbara and Pat and I had some discussion around this position, what we were able to do was if we, uh, where is it? Hold on, let me see it.
It's the next to the last.
Second from the bottom.
Okay, what we decided to do was, we had said we would decrease by ten days, but if we kept it at two-twenty, and we were able to eliminate a personal service contract that can, uh, employee that was only part-time, that came in as needed, and what we would do with this individual is that this individual would work those ten days with food service, which would eliminate us having to hire somebody to come in part-time to help that position. And it would, it would be a cost savings for us rather than to hire an additional person as a part-time person. So that's, we, we made that decision, but, uh, just forgot to add those ten days back.
I failed to get that updated to you, I called it this afternoon.
So it wouldn't be on any additional costs to our, to our, um, general fund. I think it'd be a little savings.
On, um, um, number of days, if they were decreased, how does the work get done that those days are, are the folks given a stipend instead of extended days?
Is there a particular position you have a question about?
There was one, eight days were taken off.
Yes, when the high school extra service salary schedule comes to you next month, we're, I think, looking at consumer, for the family consumer side.
Okay, I brought the, the position, okay.
That we are looking at considering a stipend for those...
And actually, those, that time was for club activities. It wasn't actually instructional time.
Okay.
It was like extras, things they did with clubs, those kind of activities. And basically, when we looked at it, rather than having the additional extended of eight days, which the one particular teacher wanted to divide those eight days between two people, which we meant four days and four days, and when we actually looked at it, it made more sense to give them a stipend which equates to those four days.
Okay.
And then that way, they can make the decision as to how and when they would use their time to accomplish those particular activities for those particular clubs and events that they would have.
Other questions? A motion is in order related to the, oh, not, uh, recommendation, first.
I recommend that we approve the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen extended contract schedule with the new presentation that you got from Stacy that shows the two-twenty days for that subfunder print clerk.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swab. Second, second by Ms. Facken. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen extended contract schedule as presented, and, well, as presented, we have the presentation here. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing, the audit.
Yes, we have the audit contract, which is due back to KDE by May twenty-eighth, so continuing with Summers, McCrery, and Sparks as our audit firm for the fee of fifteen-thousand-one-hundred-fifty, which was in their proposal. We do a three-year proposal with them, and I think this is the second year of that, so...
Any questions related to the audit contract? Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing, another contract.
The last item is the renewal of our agreement with Dreier for the amount of seven-thousand dollars. Small increase, but still less than some of the other quotes we've received.
Questions about the Dreier Physical Therapy contract? Your recommendation, Ms. Ferris?
Recommend that we approve the renewal of the Act by the Training Agreement with Dreier Physical Therapy in the amount of seven-thousand dollars for three additional years.
That motion is in order. Right, lock it in. Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And next, a discussion of the renewal of the energy management agreement. Mr. Christie.
Ms. Facken, I send you, uh, two documents. First was just a copy of the original agreement that we had on the energy management program with KSPA. And there it showed our portions, how we, how we arrived at the costs by sharing with the three other districts, and what percentages each district would pay.
It's not loading, but it's not working. Nineteen, A, B, and C.
Yeah, I've seen it, I just...
Spots where we don't need, we didn't need services, we've eliminated some of the things we've done, we've changed our lights, we're still going through this energy performance contract that we talked about a few years ago, still pulling things off, still doing those things. That's part of this.
I know that Bourbon County is not going to be a part of the partnership. That superintendent had made that decision already. Montgomery County, from what I've heard from that superintendent, he had, I don't know if he's had his board meeting or not, but he had informed me that
They're meeting tonight, huh?
That he didn't think he was going to recommend that they continue in partnership. So that meant if two districts are out, then our cost would increase significantly. And I guess at this point in time, that seventeen thousand dollars is half of a teacher's salary.
Well, when I look at what has been described as energy management activities in the other partnership districts, we're pretty low on that list in terms of activities. You know, how are these others getting stuff done in their districts that we're not?
They had, and most of those had, most of it's come from incorrect buildings not being built on total electric rates. We had a lot of ours were already there, we found some that were not. A lot of theirs have come from, finding incorrect buildings, getting off of that.
But I'm talking about just the different list of activities, you know, where it has it broken down in the report. This is the activities for energy management in Bourbon County, and there's a longer list. And then Clark County just has those very few items. And Montgomery County has all of these items. And Paris Independent has all these items. Why is that energy manager working harder in those districts than in ours?
If you look at some of the things that they listed too.
Yes, yes, I know.
Bourbon County, we use geothermal in new construction. We are too, we could have listed that too. We just cut, I cut through some of the things that I thought were just space builders, and some of those I think were.
Okay.
The installing on buses, we're doing the same, you know, I can go up through, we're doing a lot of those same kinds of things. We put lights on times, you know.
Okay. So the energy manager didn't develop this list for each county?
No.
Okay.
He did not. No. He did not. The, a large part of what he's done here that's been a significant help to me is he's developed a program to log the monthly utilities, track that. It's been a big help. That's developed, try to continue to do that. That's been, I did that kind of thing in comparing Shear to, say, Stroh, called Shear, they're two virtually the same building, one geothermal, what is, go back and look at the utilities now, and they can tell you that at Shear, it's about a hundred thousand dollars less a year in utility because of the geothermal. And that's the only difference in the schools. He tracked those, he developed a program to track those. We'll continue to try and use that, but that is something that he developed, and I'll try to get that.
But didn't we have something like that earlier, before he came, didn't train, or some consultant?
They, we looked at, about four years ago, you looked at a performance contract with Tranche, and they wanted about three and a half million dollars to do, put these things in. You elected not to go forward with that.
Right. But didn't they, didn't somebody do something on analyzing the last three to five years of utility costs during that, during that time, before the energy management people started?
I put together a report one year to analyze what we'd used, just did comparisons from in the past, just like we did with the transportation and fuel cost, put those things together, but it wasn't in the same format that
Okay, that might be what I'm thinking about.
If I remember right, I believe the train can concentrate on George Rogers Clark, Concrete, and another elementary school in the county. It may have been Stroh. Could I remember that Concrete was so, was
Largely Concrete.
Yes. I remember that was so alarming, it was like
But a lot of what was identified as issues there, Concrete are going to be addressed in the renovation.
Right, yes.
So those are going to be resolved. Now, what we've tried to do is work on the other things that were not, not there, because we know what we're going to be doing there with the renovation. Things we've been doing there is light changeouts in the gym, working on light changeouts at the bays, the bus garages, you know, things that we're doing there, ceiling, doing a better envelope, sealing the envelopes in some of the buildings in those counties. We did take a lot of the information from that, and usually picked up a lot of the flow hanging through quickly. And now we're starting to move into some of the more difficult and more times, and again, more costly things to do. They do, there is a paper, and that's what you're seeing, Sparks is twelve thousand.
What is the legal requirement for the district and the board to have in terms of an energy manager person, or?
There isn't. There isn't. And it's kind of in question of what's going to happen with keeps with this, because you were required as a district to have an energy management program, and that's kind of questionable now where that's going now. That's kind of with this energy management program, and you may see those requirements.
So, so our district can still develop an energy management program without having this energy manager that we are a group in the whole county?
And we'll continue to move forward to do the things that we've identified as utility, energy saving, things that we can do.
And we'll see more energy efficiency as we're moving forward, some of the relocations of the buildings and those kinds of things. And one of the things that has happened, as you all well know, with all of these districts is we just don't have the latitude to use general fund dollars for these kinds of things anymore, because we've had such a reduction in our funding from the state level as well as the federal level. And, you know, you're trying to recruit any kind of recurring cost that you can to do some other kinds of things that's going to have more of a direct impact on student learning. So, you know, Montgomery County really says that they're not going to do it. Paris, I mean, Bourbon County's not, I've talked to that superintendent. So if two of those districts pull out of this partnership, then our cost is going to increase. And, you know, at this point in time where we are, once you see your tentative budget next week, you're going to, seventeen thousand dollars, we really don't have to allocate to this at this point in time. And I think that the things that we have done, that Paul and his staff can continue to look at these kinds of things and do some of the same things that the energy manager, energy manager did, because we know what we need to do. Even before he came on board, we had started to do some of these kinds of things.
Some of those items are going on seventeen thousand, is what I think they're going to do.
Yeah, while you were sitting up here, I texted Steve Osborne in Montgomery County. I said, I asked him, are you, are y'all supporting the energy manager? He said no. So, yeah.
So we've had this discussion, right?
Yes.
No action required yet?
If we could tonight, it'd probably be best that we go ahead and let KSPA know, but
Oh, okay.
if we, can we do that?
Sure. We can change this too. Well, it's, our action item will be, I guess we need a motion about non-renewal of the energy management agreement.
Make the motion not to renew the energy management agreement.
Motion by Ms. Facken.
Second.
Second by Dr. Kudak. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye of not renewing the energy management agreement.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. So now we can officially notify the folks that need to know.
So I guess Paris is going to flip the bill of all of it?
I doubt it. He's probably waiting to see what they're about to
Right. So continuing, Mr. Christie, with the pay application.
Pay application number twelve from Code Out Construction for Red Senator Services.
Nine thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Continuing with the DW Wilburne pay application.
This is for approval of pay application number eighteen for general contractor DW Wilburne for the new high school project in the amount of additional valves. So that what this will basically allow us to do is cut off the geothermal well field in case there was a problem there, and you could completely valve it off, and the high school could continue to operate using the cooling tower. It shuts the well field off completely.
And why do we want to do that?
If there was a leak in the well field, and you couldn't shut it off, you could shut off well by well, right? But this would shut it off in case we were needing to do repairs and shut down the entire well field, and shut it down, and the building would still function. You would have, the valve would allow it to go over to the cooling tower, and the building could still function, just off the cooling tower.
Why didn't we think of that before now?
Well
Just curiosities.
You had the ability, I think, to cut them off well by well?
Yeah, not well by well, zone by zone.
Zone by zone. And then it's four valves, and there's eighty wells out there.
How many zones?
Well, they had like two zones, and they were cutting off at the well field, and there was a piping between the well field and the actual chemical room coming into the building. So we could shut off the well field, but then we would still have a
Oh, a section, yes, okay. Yeah, I can see that.
This is something that normally had not been done.
So like the geothermal well fields in the amount of one thousand two hundred ten dollars and ninety-five cents, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. And continuing with revised BG two and three.
You have copies of those. I'll have Merle here, he's prepared those along with Mr. Nance. If there's any questions about those, BG two is showing products finishes in the building. BG three is the actual project of the Phase Two location of the ATC project.
Closer to reality.
Yep.
Questions about the BG two, or the BG, the revised BG two and BG three? Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the revised BG two and BG three for the New Georgia High School Phase Two Area Technology Center.
Make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Facken.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion? Those in favor of approving the revised BG two and BG three for the New GRC High School Phase Two Area Technology Center, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And continuing with the even closer to reality part.
At this point, I'll ask Mr. Merle to step up. He's got the actual documents. I sent you, when I sent you the board, the idea of putting a floor plan and architectural arranging of what's going to look like, I had to put something in there, that was the first view that we had of what the actual ATC would look like, so I'll put you a copy of that, and you'll talk about that.
We appreciate that.
If you'll bring up the next image. I appreciate approvals of BG two and three, again, are the KDE forms to continue on, those will be a part of our supplemental in terms of construction documents. What I had put together here real quickly was just a quick site plan here. We'll go to the slideshow here and get to the next slide. Again, the shaded area there to your far left, which is on, you know, is the actual ATC, what you'll see is it actually creates the enclosure of the courtyard. So from a safety perspective in terms of students and from a security
So your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that we approve the construction documents for the New George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center.
And motion is in order.
It is with great joy. Would I make the motion?
Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wool. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving the construction documents for the new GRC High School Phase Two Area Technology Center, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries five to zero. This is, this is a great motion. Continuing, Mr. Christie.
As Mr. Merrill mentioned, the next item is to consider approval to give Dr. Ferris permission to go ahead and advertise the bids pending approval of KDE.
Your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
I recommend that you allow us to advertise for bids pending approval of Kentucky Department of Education for the New George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center.
And motion is in order.
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swab. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving for the superintendent to advertise for bids pending approval of the KDE for the New George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero, thank you. And continuing with the geotechnical investigation part.
This is for your consideration of approval to, for the geotechnical investigation firm of S and M and E.
By Ms. Fatkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swab. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving
Wait, I'm sorry, do we include the price?
Yes. For seven, oh, can we include the price in the motion?
Do you want to do that? I'm sorry.
I thought you did.
Yes. For $7,100.
I think actually it's $7,105.
$105, okay. Okay. Those in favor of approving the selection of S and L and E to do the geotechnical investigation for the new George Rogers Clark High School Phase Two Area Technology Center project for $7,100, $105, say aye?
Aye.
One more. One more. This is a different construction project.
This is the pay application number five for Codelle Construction Management Services
Now the need for a building relocation coordinator.
I just wanted to bring to the attention of the board that as we're moving forward toward relocating several buildings, as you well know, that in August 2013, that the plan calls for and we're in the process of making happen, that we will be moving Pilot View, Fanny Bush, and Central into the new elementary school and the renovated contract. At the same time, we will be closing two middle schools and moving them into the current GRC building. At the same time, we will be moving the current GRC population out of that building into your new GRC up the road. With that being said, I am getting real antsy about how all this is going to take place. make this happen in a very efficient and effective manner so that we are not falling over each other, making sure that this is going to happen in a very systemic way. Also, we will need somebody who's going to do some research on how much manpower is it going to take? Are we going to have to rent some trucks? Are we going to have to bring on some summer help to make sure that all of this coordination of getting these boxes packed and getting them moved in a timely manner to all of the different places around our school district? With that being said, it does not necessarily mean that it will be a full-time person. Once we advertise it, it could be a retired person who has had some experience logistically or who has had some experience organizing. It has to be someone who is very organized. It will have to be someone who is very systemic thinking that's going to pull all of this off. I go back to my experience when I was principal here and we moved from the church to the new sheer school. Not trying to throw anybody under the bus and anything like that, but a lot of that was on me as the principal. I didn't have anyone from this office that helped coordinate that move. And it was one of those things where we worked around the clock. I had a friend whose son played on the football team. His friends came and helped us move into that school. I have someone here who can vouch for that, who was a staff member at that time. And we worked up until the morning of opening school day to make that happen. I don't want that to happen to all these staffs across this district. We want to make sure that they get plenty of help, plenty of support from this office. But it's going to take somebody that's going to have the expertise and the word with all that can kind of help coordinate these, these moves. And so that's why I'm asking if you will allow me to at least put it out there, advertise it, and see who are, if anybody who's out there who would be willing to come on board and help us tackle this. As I said, at this point, I don't know if it'd be a full-time person or if it'd be somebody that we can probably bring on that maybe will work 120 days, 150 days. I don't think we'll need someone who would work five days a week from August to August. But I do think we'll need somebody that will come in and start this process. And I would like to, if you would consider this, bring somebody on this August. Because it's going to take a lot of talking, a lot of planning, a lot of looking at the big picture to see how all of this is going to unfold. At this point in time, when I think about it, I get a headache. It's a chess game, as we've been saying for the last couple of months. And I don't, I personally don't feel like we have the staff right now that can make this happen in an effective and efficient manner. So I'm asking if you would allow me to post this job description and look to see if we get any takers. And if not, then I guess I'm going to have to do it myself.
One, second.
I think we'll, I think that will be negotiable. I don't know what that would be. If we don't get someone that's going to be full-time, if it's a retired person, then they can only work for so much money. So, I don't know, let's say a price range around not to exceed $35,000. What we can do, it would be negotiable. Also, what I had talked about is, as we have put the tentative budget together, we can look at funding this out of contingency because it would be a one-time expense, so we wouldn't have to incur it in our general fund. And we, as you will see the tentative budget, we have that opportunity to do that. Also, in September, when we have the working budget, we may have it in general fund where we can use that. You already got $17,000, you're not paying the energy manager that can go toward this. So anyway, I just want you to kind of think about it. If you're not ready to make a decision tonight, I'm fine with that. But we got June that we can look at it because I wouldn't want to bring anybody on until around August, but we do want to have a timeframe where we can advertise to see if we're going to get somebody that's qualified to do this. But I wanted to bring it to your attention and see if you had any questions for us. I think you already know what we're up against now with trying to even just keep the lawns mowed on a regular basis and keeping the buildings up and all that, that we just don't have the staff that can tackle this at this time.
And especially with the way, the volume of it needs to happen within that.
Yeah, I mean, it's all going to happen around the same time. So we got to really have somebody that's going to help us organize it and put all the pieces of the puzzle together. That's their full-time job. I mean, Paul can't do that and make sure all the constructions are going on and visiting the sites and, and you never know what's going on. We've been blessed, we haven't had any issues with these, with these major projects, but, you know, so we have been able to spend not as much time on some of the construction pieces. And, you know, we're blessed, we have a resident observing, we have a construction manager on the elementary job, but just trying to coordinate all this movement in a timely and efficient and effective manner, it's going to take somebody that's just focusing on that. I think the staff would be very pleased to have somebody that they can go to. I know I would feel a whole lot better about making it happen in a timely manner if I had somebody that could coordinate this.
Give you school background on your experience part?
Do they have to have school background?
Yeah, that's what I was looking forward to here, is like someone with, you know, maybe, I was thinking, you know, you've mentioned Shelby County, Ford's moved, and Alfa County's moved, you know, someone with previous, not, because we've never moved as far as it has been, I'm sorry, it's been 17, 18 years since we've moved schools?
We've moved.
Well, since we closed, since we closed schools and moved into new ones.
So you're asking me what now?
Someone from, maybe with some school experience from out of, out of county.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be, you know, that's what I would look, yeah, me, it was glaring, to me, it's like, okay, someone who's, say even in Alfa County, moved schools.
Yeah.
But have they moved, has any district moved as many within the same timeframe as we have? I think finding, finding that kind of experience may be a real challenge, but finding people who have done a move, even if it's not to the extent that this is, would be desirable.
And I think it could be someone with some transferable skills that has a logistical background, maybe that worked at UPS, I'm just kidding. But I mean, really, it's really about organizing, looking at the big picture, connecting the dots, and working through that whole, you know, putting the pieces together, what's going to make sense, who needs to move, that kind of thing, I guess. And it could be somebody who's had some experience with moving schools. I just don't know who's out there, I guess is what I'm saying. Once we host it, I think we'll be pleasantly surprised of probably some of the experiences some people might bring, you know. I have had extensive conversation with the CEO at the hospital, Kathy Love, and basically what she said is that they brought in someone that all they do is move hospitals.
Like, moves a lot of hospitals.
Right. That's what they do.
They own 60 hospitals throughout the country. They do this quite a bit, so.
And so, you know, I was like, uh, really? So, you know, she said, well, you know, I can give you my checklists now that. I said, you know, I just, I don't know if I can use the checklists, I'll just be honest with you, because that's a different kind of organization as well, you know. So, you know, I know we, I don't know if it's any company out there that moves schools. Maybe that'll be my next job. But anyway, it might be somebody out there. I mean, it's just hard to say. It's a lot of school districts in this state and some of them probably have some expertise or some individuals who know how to do these kinds of things. I don't know. I think we throw it out there and see what we get. And if we don't get anybody that we think can do the job after we do some interviewing or whatever, then, you know, I can come back to the table and say, here we are, you know.
Board members, bring your trucks and roll your sleeves.
Yes.
Board boots and
I was thinking the same thing.
So what do you need from us tonight, just to?
Well, if you want to, you can bring it back or if you want to do like you do the other agenda item and just give me approval to
Approve.
To explore. I guess what I would need to do though is probably post it to see what we would get. If we don't get anything, then to see what happens.
I'm good with going ahead and approving it just so that you can get feelers out there just in case you don't get anything back and maybe you can revamp it or say, you know, it's just not working the way we thought it would, can we change up some things? That way you, that way you have enough time to That way you, that way you have enough time to...
Yeah, you can be that jujitsu person from UFS, so.
Right. Never know.
Is everyone okay with that? We're comfortable with that? Okay. So the motion will be...
I make the motion to approve a building relocation coordinator for the district. Is that good?
And the job description probably has to be approved too.
And job description.
So we're establishing the position and approving the job description.
Let's see what we get.
Is it from August 2012 to June 30?
Probably, probably to August because you would want to make sure that, yeah. And they may not work the whole August to August, maybe three or four days. We'll see what it entails. And if it's bigger than we think, then I'll bring it back and say, here's where we are.
Okay. So your recommendation, Dr. Ferris?
Is to approve the job description and posting of a building relocation coordinator.
And establishing that position.
Establishing that position.
Okay. A motion is in order to approve establishing the position of building relocation coordinator, approving the job description as presented, and to approve posting of the position.
Do you want your salary?
At an approximate salary...
Not to exceed $35,000.
At a salary not to exceed $35,000.
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Batkin.
Second.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Motion carries four to zero.
I'm sorry, ma'am. It's four to one.
Four to one? I'm sorry. I'm asleep. Thank you. Motion carries four to one with Ms. Batkin, Ms. Hicks, Mr. Swob, and Ms. Wolf voting aye and Dr. Kudak voting no. The next item is internal board business. The first one to select a board member to serve on one of the Mobilizing for Action Through Planning and Partnership Committees, LMEPE. And Ms. Wolf has indicated an interest in serving on one of those committees.
They hear from me enough. They need to hear from you.
So by general consent, do we have Ms. Wolf to serve on that committee?
It's now between you and Ms. Wolf, so I'll just, I'll let you all, I'll vote it out if you need to.
I'm happy for Ms. Wolf to do that. Okay, so by general consent, we approve for Ms. Deanna Wolf to represent the board on the MAP Committee. Not to be confused with MAP, LMEPE Committee. Thank you. Next is to consider approval of the date of June 21st at 6:30 for the Elementary Configuration Public Forum. Is everybody okay with that date here, probably in the auditorium? Any conflicts that you know of with that date? Okay, so by general consent, we will do that on June 21st at 6:30 PM.
We'll share with the public the same information that we shared with you all at the board meeting. We've shared it with staffs from Palatview and Central and Fannie Bush. Then we'll share it with the principals on the 23rd, the public forum, and then we'll probably bring in the other schools as well before we, and then we'll bring, you can let me know when you want to bring it back to the board. Or if you want to have a second public forum after we have that one.
Okay. Depending on what kind of input we have and all of the above.
We'll compile all that and get it to you.
Okay. So everybody has that on, putting that on the calendar.
And then we have a meeting Thurs, oh wait, from Thursday?
Yes. And also just as a general announcement, our budget meeting will be on May 24th, Thursday, May 24th at 6:30 as well. Consent agenda items. Does anyone have any questions about any of the consent agenda items or does anyone wish to consider separately any consent agenda item? A motion is in order to approve, acknowledge, or authorize the following consent agenda items. Consider approval of the BG4 closeout document for the direct purchase order, DPO074623, for Louisville Tile Distributors, Inc., for the new GRC High School project. Approve the BG4 closeout document for the direct purchase order, DPO074649.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Batkin.
Sure.
Second by Mr. Swob. Other discussion. Those in favor of approving, acknowledging, or authorizing the aforementioned items say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Is there, am I leaving out anything else? A motion is in order to adjourn.
Make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Swob.
Second.
Second by Ms. Wolf. Those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed say no. Motion carries five to zero and we are adjourned at 9:05 AM. Thank you.